Of ash on top.
Yeah.
All over.
All right, it looks like we are all present. Given that, I will call to order the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Given that there are no public comment, I will, we will convene to close session. Thank you so much. We will return to the open session at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for calling in for the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We will start momentarily, once all of the participants have arrived. Thank you so much. For those of you on the line, we will start the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting momentarily. Thank you for waiting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. We are going to reconvene to open session. Shane, are you with us today? Let's see. I do not see Shane. Harvey, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Barbie. To report out from closed session, the board did take action. Vote 5-0 on closed item number 2A, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, per government code 54956.91 with Jewel Labs Incorporated. And the board made a decision to add additional defendants to the case. A 5-0 decision. I'm moving to item 3D, Approval of the Agenda.
There's an amended.
I'll move approval of the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Mission statement. Trustee Law.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent, inspired staff, utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you, Trustee Law. For those of you who are joining us tonight as part of the public, so that you're aware, for public comment, the board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must raise your hand during the start of the agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button, and to comment by phone, raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the allotted time. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. Now moving on to item four, I do not see our student board member Shane with us today. Parveen?
Yeah, he's not with us today.
Okay, I just want to make sure he was okay. Okay. And we have really excited to have a school report, item five. Parveen? Oh, and you're unmuted, sorry.
This is our first report, and we were struggling with finding a way to do this. So I want to welcome the co-principals from Chabot, Ms. Windin, and Mrs. Perator. To get us started, welcome. You'll love it.
Hi there. We are not giving you a very serious presentation today, so, but we hope to make you smile. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Windin to say a little bit more.
Um, we just can't thank the staff and the parents and students at Chabot enough for all the hard work that every single person has been putting into this distant learning. And especially, we have been trying to make sure that we've been able to have a little bit of fun while we do distant learning. So here are just a few things that we have put together and seen so far at Chabot during these first few weeks of school.
Good evening. I am one of the principals of Chabot Elementary School, Vivian Perator. And at the end of this presentation, Ms. Windin will round it out. She is the other principal of Chabot Elementary School. Last year, we were not able to do our board presentation, and so we were not able to present our student citizens of the year. Unfortunately, halfway through the process, we were interrupted by COVID-19 and were not able to complete the inter-
I'm so sorry, I hit the wrong button. Let me go back. Technical error.
It's okay.
Good evening. I am one of the principals of Chabot Elementary School, Vivian Perator. And at the end of this presentation, Ms. Windin will round it out. She is the other principal of Chabot Elementary School. Last year, we were not able to do our board presentation, and so we were not able to present our student citizens of the year. Unfortunately, halfway through the process, we were interrupted by COVID-19 and were not able to complete the interviews. So we would like to recognize all the students who made it to the final round. Sadie Johnson, Judah Pope, Jordan Morkheim, Elise Talbot, Natalia Jamal, and Andrea Cabahal were all excellent students at Chabot for their time. And now that they are in middle school, we know that they will go on to do wonderful things there, too. We would also like to recognize a parent whose child, youngest child, also moved on to middle school this year. And so we will miss her at Chabot. Vicky Devi has been an amazing parent volunteer for many years, and she has done an outstanding job in so many different areas, including our musical, classroom volunteers, library help, PTA, the list goes on. So thank you very, very much, Vicky, for all of your years of dedication to Chabot. And now, we are going to proceed with the rest of our presentation. Thank you.
We may be learning at a distance here at Chabot, but we are still having fun. So teachers, how have we been having fun and building community so far this year?
Yes, we're still having fun here at Chabot. So second graders here at Chabot are having so much fun learning about each other and learning curriculum. We've been using a lot of Padlet to allow them to express their favorite words and favorite books, even through video as well. Another wonderful resource has been Flipgrid, where they make a video of themselves, and other students are able to go on and make video compliments using the comment section. It's been a lot of fun getting to know my students and interviewing them during class time.
So, first thing we're doing in the center of our paper is we are drawing an oval. And it's a horizontal oval. Okay? Next step, on top of the oval, I want you to draw, it's kind of like an M, the letter M as in monkey, but instead of it being pointy, I want your M to be rounded. Okay? All right, next step. Above the M, I want you to draw like an arc, like a rainbow, that also touches the original oval. Okay, are we ready to show them? Countdown. Get your paper ready. Three, two, one, go! Awesome!
Oh, no, I'm not interested.
Why me? Why me? Tell me, what was my crime? As chatty as a parrot, more annoying than a mime.
Hey, look, a cat whose worm hook is that's crazy.
Why me? A simple answer would be fine.
You know, this is good cardio.
Won't someone please send me a sign?
Oh, look, a sign, Lake Chabot Road, straight ahead.
What did I do to deserve this, honestly? This pest of mine is not so fine, why me?
Man, what could be better than this?
Why me? Why me? A simple answer would be fine. Won't someone please send me a sign? What did I do to deserve this, honestly? This pest of mine is not so fine, why am I with you? That'll do, donkey. That'll do.
Hi, my name is Sarah Windin, and I am one of the co-principals here at Chabot Elementary School. Not only do I have the great opportunity of working beside Mrs. Perator as co-principals, but I also am a second grade teacher here at Chabot as well. So I hope you enjoyed our presentation. As you can see, even though this is not the start of the school year we all anticipated or hopeful, we are still encouraging and having a strong Chabot community, and we're still having fun. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great.
Do you have any further comments? Joe? And then Doc, and then Carrie.
Sarah and Vivian, that was wonderful. What a way to kick off the year and your first couple of months of being a principal as well. I have to say, Vivian, I thought the timing was perfect on when you got cut off, because you were saying that we're just, things didn't go quite. And I thought, this is a trick. She's waiting to see if we're going to hang up or not. So Amy added that to you. But it's wonderful to see how hard your staff and your students and families have stepped up to make the best of this very troublesome time. So I really, really enjoyed that. Thank you so much.
Doc?
That was so much fun. You know, it's been really heavy with the smoke and the weather and, and just everything. So I feel like that's the most that I've laughed in at least a month, or smiled. So thank you very much for sharing that with us. And I was thinking, before we got our board packet, gosh, I really missed the school reports. So thank you for being the first one this school year.
Carrie?
Yeah, thanks for that. It was fun to watch, really a lot. There was actually one serious thing in it, I think, and that was the sort of peek into the art classroom to see what it looks like from the perspective of the teacher. And then I'll see all the students out there doing the various things, and it seemed to work really well. So, but thanks for all of the thing. It was, it was really a fun thing to watch.
Monica?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what the rest of the board said. That was, that was a lot of fun. And since we can't do school visits this year, it was really kind of fun to get an insight into how classrooms are operating and see the children are learning and, and having a good time while they're doing. Thank you.
Parveen? And you're unmuted.
I'm always impressed by what's been done in classrooms. But I just want to give lots of kudos to our teachers, our administrators at the school. The two of them are an awesome team. And the families who really, I mean, this doesn't work unless everybody works really well together. And there's a lot of responsibility on the students, the families, the teachers, and schools. So that was amazing. And the musical, I don't even know how you guys put that together, but it's incredible. The kids were amazing. It's so wonderful to see the faces of the children, because I, as you have heard, we really, really miss seeing kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Parveen. And lastly, I just want to say, what a treat through this cloud of darkness that we have hovering over us this very day. It's so refreshing to see the kids. And I have to say, Chabot is well-known for its theater program. We can see it shining through once again. So we appreciate seeing everyone. Thank you for your presentation. We'll be moving on to item six, California School Employees Association and the Castro Valley Teachers Association Report. We'll start with item A, California School Employees Association. Is Robin Fink on the line? Do not see Robin on the line. So we will move on to Castro Valley Teachers Association Report from Mark Maldonage. Mark? Let me bring you on over. Welcome, Mark.
Hi, everyone. So I have my address here. We are involved in the distance learning, and there are common themes that are emerging. The first theme is to a person, our members are going above and beyond to meet the times. The board and community should be proud that our teachers are reinventing curriculum, educating and making connections with students and families every day. I've heard from multiple elementary teachers, and they have parent, teacher conferences frequently. They are helping out not only students' access technology, but are working closely with parents as well. Having daily office hours at all levels is offering students and parents the opportunity to check in on an as-needed basis. This is one of the keys in helping our students find success under our present circumstances. Distance learning is incredibly difficult for everyone, which is another theme. This is difficult for our students. The number one thing that students in my government class miss is the connection they have with their classmates and the community that the school provides. We all feel really bad that our students are missing out on these experiences. The collective sacrifice is real, and it's needed, but it is very hard. It is difficult for our teachers. Even with my many years of experience, I feel like a first-year teacher. The curriculum I am developing, the way I am grading, the way that I am communicating with my students is difficult. Every lesson is new, and grading takes forever. It is also difficult to make connections when everyone is on a screen. We cannot even see all of our students on a single screen unless we use unauthorized extensions or purchase upgrades to Zoom and Google out of our own pockets, or purchase second monitors, which our members are doing. This is difficult for all of our staff, and the burden has fallen disproportionately on our PE teachers, because one of their classes has no class size cap. We have PE teachers with enormous class sizes and caseloads. One member shared that he has 240 member, students on his roster. All of our classes are filled to capacity, and as more students are transferring out of CVVA, this will continue. Another theme is the glitchiness of technology. Students and staff alike are getting kicked out of meetings or talk like robots because their connections or, or microphones are bad, or cameras are not working because technology is unpredictable. This is nobody's fault, but it is a theme. This is not a matter of whether or not we are working onsite or from our homes. There are ways to make virtual teaching more efficient, and that involves listening to what teachers need in the district, allocating resources, and providing the training so that we can be as effective as possible. Upgrading both Google and Zoom, providing headsets, and providing a second monitor to teachers would go a long way in making what, in making virtual teaching more efficient. I have faith that our staff will do everything in our power to provide what our students need. This month has been incredibly stressful. Every member I have spoken with is burning it at both ends, but I know that we can do it, and our community is relying on us. That's what I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mark. Take care of yourself, please.
You, too.
There, I wanted to just double check and see for items not on the agenda. If there's any public comment, I do not see any hands raised. And then I will move us on to the consent agenda. This is an action item?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We will move on to item nine, Reports, Discussion, and Action Items. A Superintendent Update. Parveen?
Yes. Thank you so much. I know Amy is going to share our presentation tonight. Tonight's going to be a little longer. So hopefully, in the future, we have less to say, but I just wanted to give a, we have quite a bit of an update on just what's happening around COVID and what we are doing. Next. Next slide. So tonight, I want to just share a few things about the state and county public health updates. And we have links in for all of these things that I have on the next page so that it's easy for folks to go to it later if they would like. It's all public knowledge. Elementary school reopening waiver process, I wanted to say a few words about that. I know that's been a question on people's minds. Highlights and challenges that include, you know, some information on technology, highlights and challenges, specialized highlights and challenges, and then nutrition services. So, next. And these are the links that I have in here for you. We have put in Blueprint for a Stronger Economy. That was August 28. So if you click on that, that's where you will go. Department, Department of Public Health Guidance on Small Cohorts, that we're going to talk about a little bit. August 25, the California Department of Public Health had an FAQ on targeted specialized support, which is the learning hubs or the small cohorts and, and support hubs. CDC also has some information on there for school and childcare programs. And then California Department of Public Health also has industry guidance for, and, and for schools, which was updated, were updated on August 8. And then August 27 is what we have down here as Alameda County School reopening plan. Next page, please. All right. So as you know, now we have a system that the state has adopted to indicate where we are with COVID. So there's purple, red, orange, and yellow. Where everybody wants to be is yellow. So, but right now, we are in purple, as Alameda County and many, as you see this map. We posted this map on Thursday. I can tell you, the colors may not have changed much for most, but there are some counties that are getting close to going into red. And, and Alameda County is going in the right direction, but we are still in purple. As you know, you have to be in the same color or same tier for three weeks before county is allowed to move forward. So, and once that happens, then you have to be in the new. Tier for two weeks in order to be able to do what you, you are allowed in that tier. So basically it takes a few weeks to get from one place to another, to another tier. Where there is less restriction. Next page. So, like I said, Alameda County is in widespread, um, has been in it and hopefully will get out at some point to go to substantial. Widespread would mean that we have many non-essential, um, outdoor, indoor businesses closed. But once we get to the next stage, some of those will be open, including, you know, there will be guidance around schools when we get to substantial and moderate. But basically, um, school, when we are in purple, we are not allowed to reopen for in-person instruction. Um, unless we have a waiver from the county for TK six grades and there are no waivers available for any other grades. Um, schools can reopen for in-person instruction once our county has, their county has been in substantial or red. Tier for at least two weeks. Um, and we do have a transition period that we have actually, um, included in our memorandum of understanding. And schools must then follow the guidelines that are in place, uh, when we do reopen and get to that point. So, and those guidelines are also, uh, linked here. Next page. Um, so this is just, um, just a couple of pieces of information that's on Alameda County's, uh, website. As you see here, Eden area, um, that would include Ashland, Cherryland, uh, Hayward area and San Lorenzo. 1,155 cases. This was last week and then Castro Valley MAC, they call it. I don't know why they call it Castro Valley. But, um, Castro Valley is 473, um, and onwards. Um, and you see the chart on, uh, the graph on the right side. That shows, uh, where we are with, um, you know, hospitalization in ICU. And also as well as total hospitalization. Going down, but still not where we need to be, obviously. Next page. Um, so what state guidance means for CBUSD for school reopening is because of Alameda County and where we are. Um, all school facilities remain closed for most in-person instruction. Um, in order for us to go again, as I said, we have to satisfy all those criteria for three weeks and then remain at that level for two weeks. So elementary school waivers are available in Alameda County. At this point, um, they had, uh, we've had lots and lots of meetings today. Again, at our superintendent's meeting. We spent about, um, at least an hour with, uh, two doctors from the county. As well as three other staff members where they were sharing with us a lot of information about how, um, some of this will work once schools reopen and what do we do in the meantime? But, um, there, they had asked all of the school districts to fill out a survey. Um, that we, um, even if we're not interested in the waiver, so that they can kind of get a feel for it. Uh, but most of us shared that we're not, um, I can speak for us. That, um, at this point, I don't believe, um, that we would be interested in a waiver for elementary school. Even for people who are interested, it is very difficult, uh, to handle all of the different things that you have to do before you even get the waiver approved. And it takes weeks. So what happens is, um, school districts or schools, private schools, a lot of private schools are, um, also included in our, uh, conversation, obviously. And you have to fill out the waiver form. You have to have all these things in place and then it goes to the county office of education. And it goes to the county health department and then they look at it together and then it gets sent to the state to be approved. So pretty, um, long process. And what we are permitted to do without a waiver is to reopen, uh, as far as reopen. We're, um, we are allowed to do a couple of things which I will go over next, uh, in the next, uh, slide. But basically, um, when we are open, when we are allowed to open, districts are required to demonstrate a lot of risk reduction practices. Um, at school facilities as well as capacity, um, and for partnerships, for example, um, testing. Right now there isn't, um, really a good methodology to get as many tested as we want, um, in the county. One of the things we will have to do is actually have, um, uh, you know, have a contract with a vendor at some point. If that comes about, but case investigation, contact tracing, they are working on having some training for us in this case. I think that all of the districts would, um, would say that we are all doing a really good job tracing already. With what we have in place for those of us who have been here, but, um, all of those things need to be in place once, um, districts are allowed to reopen. Next. Slide. So what we are permitted to do, um, without a waiver is mandatory assessment. So there are assessments that we have to do. For example, for special education, but there are assessments that we need to, uh, to, um, actually have. And, and English language learners, we have, um, you know, some assessments for students that we've been actually doing that were, um, needed to be done. Section five or four accommodations and interventions. So basically, um, it's really for targeted specialized support. Or individual, not in-person, um, instruction, but individual services. For example, in special ed, we'll say a little bit more about that, um, in a, a couple of more slides, uh, further out. But basically we are not, at this point are not allowed to have even our special day classes open for in-person instruction as a group. But there could be, for example, speech therapy. Uh, there absolutely, um, it, we are allowed, uh, to have special education assessments. We are also allowed to have intervention and other, um, you know, and just to make sure that some of our students who are really struggling. Um, and have been identified by schools as needing additional support. Um, and intervention, we are also, um, child cares are allowed to be open and we have our childcare facilities actually open right now. The companies that we work with like YMCA Adventure Time and things like that. Um, and then youth activities, um, sports conditioning and internships and pole workers are also allowed. Yes.
Doc?
Is that me? You're yapping?
Yes, yes.
Sorry. You, you mentioned, um, that we're allowed to do speech therapy right now. It, what about occupational therapy for, um, special ed students and, um, social emotional therapy? Are those kinds of things available to students?
So, um, some of those things are available, the services that can be done one-on-one with all the safety measures put in place are allowed. Um, and actually I believe that, uh, Ms., uh, Williams might be able to join us later on if there are any more questions about that. But a great question. I was just using an example. Yes. Um, next, um, I, before we go to the next one, I do want to say, um, when we talk about the, uh, you know, the conditioning. Youth activities and sports conditioning, it is not to actually play sports. It's for conditioning. Um, and you have to have a, a whole set of, uh, guidelines that we have to follow with that as well. I do want to say that we do have, um, because of, um, election, we are working directly with the county. To have, uh, polling stations that, uh, that will be set up. They do need a lot more space because of COVID and we are working with them on that. Um, next slide, please. So, uh, these are, I mean, I know it's very small, but guidance for small cohorts and group of children and, and youth. So we, um, have been working and we are working on, um, starting our support hubs. So this would be for students to come in, for example, um, who, um, have been identified as needing support in this area. It would be to do their distance learning in school. So they won't be in the classroom with the teachers getting instruction, but they would be able to have a space at school. A, um, the technology, the, uh, bandwidth and any other supports that they need, um, in intervention. So these cohorts or, um, support, um, hubs that we are going to hopefully, um, be opening up very soon. Would be limited to, um, only 14 children in a cohort. And they cannot have any more than two adults. But what's really important that the, the students in the cohort and the adults must always stay the same. So we can't switch groups. We cannot have children mix. It would be the same groups of students. So it could be six students with an adult, seven students with an adult. Um, the maximum cohort size cannot be above that. And even if, for example, we say we have 14 in a cohort, but only 12 show up or, or two show up. We can't say now we're going to add more or we're going to have more. So, um, one-to-one specialized services can be provided, like we just mentioned. To, to provide them the services that they need. That's not a part of their youth cohort. So. It, you know, maybe there are students who need this, uh, the specialized services, but they're not a part of the cohort. So that can be done because then they would have contact with another adult. The point is to keep the students always the same with the same adult. So if we move them and do other things, then that kind of mixes that whole idea. Now you've kind of cross pollinated.
Parveen? Just to make sure that, I mean, I think it's pretty clear to the board of, you know, what these cohorts consist, but just for the public. Like to qualify to be part of this cohort, what does that look like?
So they, they, um, actually want us to identify. It wouldn't be that there's, it's open to everybody. Because we are supposed to focus on students who are struggling. They are English learners. They, um, might have other issues with technology. Uh, they may have social emotional needs that we must, you know, that we just feel like there's more of an opportunity for them to learn. So we will work with our principals and teachers, um, to identify the students. And we want to make sure that because we can't have a whole lot of students, we really want to be targeted, um, with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and then, um. I think I've listed here behavioral services, educational support services as a part of it. It's called a targeted intervention, um, strategy. Supervising adults should be assigned to one cohort and must work solely with that one cohort. So we can't have the adult do this. And be with students and then go and do something else. We have to have them assigned to that job and just solely to work with those students and not other people. Um, and, and if we have substitutes, um, that we need, um, we have to avoid changing staff. But you know, if there's an emergency and something like that happens, that we have to make sure, um, that, that we put in place all sorts of measures to make sure the person. Is safe to come in and, and it's always the same person, um, so that we don't change every day. Um, and then of course, we are going to have a very solid tracing, tracking and tracing process and procedures in place. That we are actually, um, working with the county on. Just as an example. Um, this, this, a part of the reason for cohorts is obviously to minimize infection. Because if somebody comes down with COVID, then we know exactly who to contact and, and what the bandwidth, uh, I mean, how, what the sphere of influence of that one. COVID case is and, and who's been caught, who we need to contact, um, and all of that. So we, we have been working with our principals to kind of, um, set the groundwork. We also have a lot of measures in place for the physical space for, to make sure that it's based, based out, there is fresh air. Even, um, and if they are there all day, that they would be, um, obviously child nutrition would provide them with food. Um, that they couldn't even go to the cafeteria to eat food. They can eat outside in their cohort. But we would have the food delivered so that there's no contact with another separate adult from their adult that is, uh, assigned to their cohort.
Parveen, Doc had her hand up?
Parveen, you mentioned that, um, the county is, uh, supporting training around contact tracing. And I know the county also has contracts with different, uh, community-based organizations to do contact tracing. Are they also providing any funding associated with their training and the contact tracing that staff may potentially be doing?
Um, unfortunately, no. Um, I didn't hear that this morning. I, I think, um, they are setting up the training. Also, there are other counties, um, that have kind of been ahead of us in that. That they've had really good training for contact tracing for schools. So we, um, the county office of education is actually offering that to us. With the county department of public health. You know, we don't always have to start from scratch. I think there's been a lot of good work done. And, you know, we can, if somebody else has done it already, then the county public health is absolutely willing to say, okay, somebody else has done this. So why don't we just kind of model that same idea? But no funding that I know of, um, with that.
So, I mean, Parveen, the intent of this is really to help those most in need, right? I mean, these are kids that are falling far behind, you know. Internet access issues that, you know, they're, they're going to have the fullest, biggest issues. And in order to do this, obviously we're going to have to have a lot of safety protocols in place, um, to make sure that it can happen.
Yeah. So I think I, in my response to, um, trustee Theodore was about the contact tracing funding for that. But I do, um, to your point, uh, Ms. Whitaker, I do, I do want to say, we do have the CARES Act money that we are using for this purpose, for these purposes. So for PPE, for everybody, um, all of those things we have in place already. Um, next slide, please. Um, so this is just about the elementary school waiver. Um, you know, that there's, um, information, there's a link. As a part of that process, um, we have to, you know, whichever school district is interested, they would have to share a return to school plan. That's aligned with the guidance. For us, I think, uh, at this point, instead of trying to, um, kind of look at a waiver for elementary. We are, um, oh, you know, we should be starting in today. That was a conversation at the superintendent's meeting that all school districts should really, on a day, on a. Ongoing basis, you should be really looking at all of these things. So that when it's time to actually reopen at some point, that we have all of these things in place. So I, I don't think there's anything really new in here. You have heard about all of the different things, face covering, physical distancing, limiting gathering. Uh, and conducting, uh, contact tracing and testing. I think testing is going to continue to be an issue until the county has a better handle, um, or capacity. Next slide, next slide. So, um, I wanted to just share a few highlights and challenges, I think that, um, that you did hear, um, from, uh, Mr. Mladonich, our union president. Absolutely true about how everybody's working very, very hard. Um, everyone, everything is new. You know, I, you look at the presentation from Chabon, like, how do you even do that? So everyone's working very, very hard. Uh, there has been a lot of, um, there's a, a lot of ongoing professional development. That our teachers are involved in. Oops. We went forward. That's okay. Yes, um, so we have, um, the systems to take attendance. Um, I do want to say, um, some of the challenges are the changing requirements from the state. Um, you know, we have one direction about you've got to do this, but we don't have the form. We have to do this, but we don't know how long we, we have to, uh, do a certain thing. So they've had, um, there are lots of playlists that our teachers have put together. There's social emotional, um, check-ins, um, a Google classroom that, um, the vast majority of our teachers are using. Some are also using Zoom, uh, common consistent daily schedules and it, and check-ins, as you heard. Before teacher and student interaction, balanced. Uh, before teacher and student interaction, balanced live interaction and screen time. Um, so that their, that children are not online, um, you know, with uh live interaction with everybody uh for so many hours. Um, we have had LPAC testing, that's the English language uh testing that we were talking about. We've had effective material distribution, we've distributed materials. And there are, most schools have had their back-to-school nights. And, um, we really have tried to do um our part in communicating from sites to families and from us to the whole community. But there are obviously challenges. Everything is new. Just like you heard, it's really hard not to have students and meet them in person and be with them and for them to be together. Um, state requirements, for example, I'll give you an example around the uh the challenges that we have. So we have to take attendance on a daily basis and we have to have check-ins with students. But we are also required under SB ninety-eight to have this thing called the weekly engagement accountability. Now, what we were given, the form that CDC came up with as an option, was so complicated. And would take so much time that every school district pushed back. Um, and we said, well, that doesn't work. So we are still, all school districts are still trying to figure out the best way and the easiest way to do that. So that it's actually doable for our teachers um through our technology and things like that. Uh, getting new, used to new tech and schedules and obviously technology. We don't own Google or Zoom. Um, there was a really good, a great question last night when we were at the PTA meeting um at Canyon. Um, you know, it, what would be the possibility of having like one platform? Like either Google or Zoom. And my response was, unfortunately, neither one has everything that we need. So we've got to kind of put the two together to to make sure. But Google is our preferred platform, um, safe. Um, and I know some families were concerned about Zoom and Zoom bombing that you have heard. All of these are going to be new words in the dictionary by the way. Um, but, but we have not had that issue. It's because our teachers have done a really great job. Our technology department has sent out information about how to set their settings. Um, so that they uh prevent some of that from happening. One of the reasons that that happened in some school district is students were allowed to use their personal emails versus the district email. We actually don't allow that. Students have to use their district emails. Um, power outages are also another issue. We haven't had any so far, but. Um, and then added responsibilities for families. I mean, I can't say, I can't thank them enough. Um, there's a lot of responsibility on families when they have to work and have their children at home learning. Um, I um wanted to um also say that we are trying to um support our staff. We have asked for updates to Zoom. We are working with Google. All of those things are happening. Uh, but it takes a lot longer than 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 you would think and that we would like. But it is, we are doing that. And as far as monitors um for teachers um in the classroom. Uh, they do have all of their equipment in the classroom. But in case, um, for those who are teaching from their homes, um, there are some additional monitors that we are, we have looked for and are available. And if there are any at their schools, we have let them know that they could take them um home. Um, we constantly order materials, but we know that if we, we already know that if we order any additional monitors. I'm not, um, we're pretty sure that we are not getting them, um, in a timely manner. Um, but we're all looking for um additional monitors, but basically the um projectors and the screens in the classroom are also available. Um. Next slide. So special education highlights and challenges, um, it's, it is very difficult for students to be on this, to be distance learning. But it's especially difficult for our students who have unique challenges um and abilities. Um, so. Um, what we have, um, actually had in place is, um, we, we've had learning systems for mod to severe classrooms. We have had daily speech and counseling and behavioral support, all virtual. Um, and we're hoping at some point um to move into the next phase. Specialized academic instruction uh for all students with disability, one-to-one in-person assessment starts. Um, we hopefully next, not hopefully, but we will start next week. Uh, playlists to um for special ed classes as well. Uh, been available, distance learning plans updated um to SB ninety-eight standards. Um, and then we've had some um special ed parent trainings um that are, that we have planned. That are gonna start, um, special, um, specially at C Base on September fifteen. So we have that all scheduled. Um, and then there are weekly updates for resources for staff so that they um can get the support they need. But challenges, again, certain difficulties with virtual learning. We all know that. And this is why, um, the state uh guidelines actually include bringing, um, you know, having those one-on-one. Services provided in person when possible for students and, um. At some point, hopefully allowing us to have um cohort of students coming back. There's a lot of stress on families, um, while their children are not in school in person. And we recognize that. Um, and then, um, you know, there are opportunities could, that we've had for community-based instruction. For uh for our transition age youth that really isn't available right now at this point. So, um, there are definitely challenges in, um, in some of the things that we would like to do. But I want you to know that we have been working really hard, especially the last two weeks. And now that we know we can do this, to um have testing happening and some of these services starting in person. Um, let's see, I don't know if Ms. Williams has anything. I don't think so. Um, but let's go to the next slide. So technology, um, we have over nine thousand um Chromebooks out, two hundred fifty MiFi's available. Um, to support distance learning. I do want to say again, the MiFi is great, the Chromebook is great. But it's a lot better when you're on site, just because we have incredible bandwidth. Um, implementation, also, we have people who can help students if they have any issues with tech. Um, we've had ten new software systems to support distance learning. That's a lot of work that had to go into that. Net, network infrastructure through Measure G has been absolutely instrumental in what we've been able to do. I don't think we could have done what we have been able to do if we didn't have all those um things in place. Thank goodness you were wise enough to put that in Measure G. Technology training for teachers, staff and substitutes, we've had that. We've also trained substitutes. But there's a lot of technology um training that teachers have had to take. Um, and I want to thank Peter Vallejo um for all of the work that he's done to train. Um, teachers as well, um, and all of the work that Greg has done uh for technology. Workshops on Google classrooms, we already had, and now we have some through C Base moving forward. We, um, have, um, had a lot of, so when things don't work, parents are letting us know what's not working. And, um, so far, we have closed over two hundred thirty-five parent student support tickets in August. Um, closed over three hundred sixty-five staff support tickets in August. Um, so lots happening. Um, but things are not ever perfect with technology. Um, especially, um, with all the challenges that we have. So ensuring that they all have adequate bandwidth is a huge issue. With video conferencing, it takes a lot of bandwidth. Purchasing additional hardware, they're backordered across the country. I continuing to build technology skills for all of our staff is a challenge as well as ongoing technology support for staff and families. So just, we want to be realistically, you know, we're trying everything we can to support everyone, our staff and our students. But I know that there are areas that we can continue to get better and and, um, you know, just more support for everybody. Next slide. And, um, I, uh, it was interesting, I was watching uh the news late at night and. Uh, they kind of mentioned how, um, that, how, um, a couple of school districts, large school districts are. Um, offering nutrition to everybody under eighteen. And I kept screaming and saying, but, but it's everybody, every school district. But I want, I put this in here because it is really important for everyone to know that we, starting September eighth. That we began offering free grab-and-go meals to any child under the age of eighteen in the community. So, um, families can pick up meal from uh from any site. Um, legal guardians may pick up meals on behalf of their child. Because, um, I think there was at one point, and this is because the state has given us, the federal government has given us the waiver. Um, so we can actually do this now. We can feed everybody. Um, we can also, um, we don't require that they, the children come. Because that was really a, um, an obstacle for some families who were coming to pick up meals. Um, and there's a really great video, um, that our, um, director of child nutrition has. Uh, actually put together, um, that we posted on our, um, on our social media. Um, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that this is happening. I think that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Yeah. Well, I just want to acknowledge the staff, certificated and classified administrators, district office personnel that have pulled together to make this happen. Um, you know, I know, we all know that this was never on anybody's radar screen ever. And, um, I really respect what they've done. I actually have heard from parents and students that it's working. It's not ideal, but everybody is doing the best they can to um have a positive impact on our students. So I want to make sure that we thank all of the people involved. And I know that it's uh difficult to uh transition to these technology classrooms. But I just want to share that, um, my daughter's a teacher. She put on Facebook, she needed another monitor. She was completely overwhelmed. People that she didn't even know in her community came by and left monitors on her porch. Cause they heard she was a teacher. She was able to take them to school and distribute to almost every single teacher on her staff. So I really hope that we take advantage of those kinds of opportunities to assist our teachers as well.
Yeah, I I think that's a really good point, um, because we have had, we have some monitors that we have, um, gotten ready for, um, folks to pick up. Uh, but that might be a really, that's probably a really good idea for schools to do on their website. So we'll talk to them. Because that way they know it's for their school and, um, and if they need anything. We have a very giving community.
Um. We have some in the garage. I mean.
Yeah, bring them in. We'll pick them up. We'll pick them up. Um, I wanted to, um, I wanted to piggyback on what you said. Um, I honestly, when I look around, not just at the district office, I can't believe how dark it is. Um, at the district office, but at every school site. I mean, there, there have been people working day in and day out to be able to do what we are doing. Our technology folks, our custodians, our office staff, our secretaries, our clerks, um, our paraphr, everybody is working really, really hard to make this happen. So I I do appreciate every single individual, our administrators, um, our facility, um, director, our uh maintenance and operations director. And supervisor of just, you know, like, just setting up the rooms for assessment takes a lot of work to make sure everything is perfect. Questions, comments?
I guess I do want to say, I want to thank. The district for putting so much work and especially, you know, Suzie, Gary, Krebs and their team. Um, and and all the staff for putting together such good safety protocols on site. To ensure the safety of our employees and our visitors. You know, everybody's been scared throughout this pandemic. And the, the biggest issue has been, how are we gonna ensure that people are safe? And the, the plans are pretty clear. You know, you visit the site, you have to, you know, use all the appropriate PPE. You have to social distance. And, you know, I, I'm really proud of our staff for the, the way that they've been able to manage. Our, the safety of our visitors, our, you know, our staff, our teachers. So wanted to send a big shout out to them as well. And, you know, this is rough. And we're gonna continue to go through, I guess, you know, do, try to do the best that we can with a very. Bad hand. So just wanted to send my, my huge appreciation over to them and to everyone going through it.
Thank you. There are no other board comments. We do have one public comment. So I will, um, open up to Jenny Rubbles to speak.
Hi, I just want to say, um, thank you. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Um, I just want to say thank you to all the teachers and all the staff who have worked so hard to get us to where we are. Uh, I appreciate it. I know my kids as students appreciate it. Um, so thank you, first of all, but I did have a question. Um, in superintendent's message, I didn't quite understand the rationale of why we're not applying. For the waiver for the K through six program. If, um, the funding is there and if all the protocols are in place, what, um, at what point in time? Is the plan to apply for the waiver to allow kids to come back to school? Um, that's the part of the presentation I didn't quite understand is the why we're not, um, exploring that. Um, and that was my main question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. I'm going to mute your line. Um, yeah, I know we usually don't like have conversations, but I, that's a really great question. And I think here's how I can say that. Um. The, the criteria that they have for us to be, to be able to have a waiver is tremendous. It, they are making it very difficult for us to ask for a waiver. Because when you ask for a waiver and you have more than fourteen students or whatnot. And right now, because of where we are in Alameda County, they don't feel it's a, it's safe for us to have more than a certain number of students. And if you, um, have, let's, let's say, two hundred fifty students on campus, you need to put in so many things in place. That right now, that we have to show them that we don't have at this point. For example, the biggest piece for us right now is the contact tracing that we need to get a lot of training in, that they haven't given us. We can do it with fourteen kids at each school, but or or twenty or thirty or something like that, but we can't do it for, for a hundred students. And also staff and then testing. Those two pieces are still really things that the county is still working on. So even if we did, if the board wanted us to ask for a waiver, um, to open schools. It would probably take another five weeks tech realistically before we actually do that. So that's why, when you really look at, if we are in purple and if we move to red and it's gonna be the same amount of time. And then we don't have to go through this waiver and send it to the state, we would just be allowed to reopen. And then we would have all of the things in place to reopen. Does that make sense to the board? Cause it's, it's not easy, it's not as easy to get a waiver. And I don't feel, at this point, I, I don't believe that, um, that the county. Would be able to help us, um, get all of the, the criteria met with testing and and tracing and tracking. If any of you have any, anything else, but that's kind of my take on it. And and as I, um, you know, as we had our conversation this morning, um, you know, we also, um, have to. A part of that requirement is that we have to have, uh, staff who is able to and willing to come in. And actually teach and then not do distance learning. At this point, um, that would also be another thing that we have to tackle.
Thank you, Harvey. Seeing there are no other, um, questions or comments from the board.
Seeing there are no other uh, questions or comments from the board, I will move us on to item B, approved person. Oh, we have a few. Wait, which one? Who are you pointing at? Doug?
Above you. I, I was just trying to think about how I wanted to phrase what I wanted to say about applying for waivers from uh, a virology perspective and from a public health perspective. Um, but just because you can do it doesn't mean you should do it. Um, just because we meet certain metrics um, at the, at the very minimum, doesn't make it completely safe. So we need to really, and I'm glad, Parveen, that we are approaching this with caution and, and not just applying because the county says we can't apply for them.
Gary? Thank you, Doug.
You know, through July and August, we had an extensive conversation uh, in the community as well as on the, among the board about safety and what we thought was the right thing to do. And the upshot of that, I believe, was that we all agreed pretty much that this is not the right time to be thinking about opening schools up. Uh, there may be those few uh, specific areas where there's, where we need to do something with a very small number of students. But I think the overall thought is that the situation hasn't improved to the extent where we need to be thinking anything about opening the schools at this point. So I think the county can do what they want, but I, I believe Castro Valley is going to stay like it is for a while until it's truly safe. Thanks.
I, um, I was going to say, and what I, I can't speak for other, um, you know, all the other districts, but I can tell you that there aren't too many public schools that are able, are going to apply. Because we have a lot of students and we have, um, we have things that we need to work with that they do not um, have issue, you know, things that they need to tackle. Um, you know, we, it's just to your point. We are allowed to do those small cohorts and we will start those, but that's really for special um, circumstances. Um, we are also, I just want, um, families to also know that all of us as superintendents are pushing really hard to see what else we would be allowed to do for our students with special needs. Because you know, if you have seven students in a cohort, is there a possibility for us to at some point bring them in? I would think that they would allow that before actually reopening the whole school to everybody. Um, to have, because at some point, if you remember, they had said we could bring our, uh, our special day class students back in a group. And then they, because we did so poorly uh, with cases in Alameda County, then they took that back. So I would think that if anything, that might be the first thing they, I, I'm just guessing that might come, you know, our way. I can tell you that I, I know myself and all of the superintendents are really advocating to get some, some of these services. Doug?
Uh, I also recognize that it's an equity issue. Um, and I'm, we're always looking at what else we can do. I'm glad that we're not just sitting back saying, oh, we got out all of the Chromebooks and all of the MiFi's. We've done all that we can. I'm glad that we're always thinking about what else our students need and what else we can do. Um, and so that, it, it, of course, being back in the classroom is the best. But short of that, because we're very short of that, um, we are doing a lot of things to, to meet the needs of our students and then we can still do more. We, there is still so much more that we can do. So thank you for, for your presentation and, and this discussion.
No, thank you. One, one thing I didn't include in the presentation, but we are also working on is to get us, uh, some of our teachers who, um, in, you know, when school was open, we would have intervention after school. Um, where we would just, you know, um, have teachers who were able to and willing to work after school and we would pay them um, additionally to do intervention. We are starting that. Um, and we actually have quite a, a large group of people who have said they're interested. So that would be additional. Um, and we're going to work with each principal. It's going to look at what they need um, and actually put some of those things in place. But it will all be online, um, not in person for after school. It's great to hear. Looking, any other questions? Comments? All right, now I will move us on to the approved, uh, item B, approved personnel report.
You have a revised personnel report that reflects some of the staffing switches from virtual academy.
Thank you, Sheri. This is an action item.
I'll move approval of the personal report as a minute.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. I will move us on to item nine C. Open up the public hearing, variable term waiver request for Jamie Mongoso, multiple subject credential and Jeffrey Mosier, PPS school special work. Seeing that there are no public comments, I will close the public hearing and move us on to item nine D. Approved variable term waiver request twenty twenty-one for Jamie Mongoso, multiple subject credential and Jeffrey Mosier, PBS school social work.
I'll move to approve the variable term waiver.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move to item nine E, intent of reappointment of Personnel Commissioner Lowe.
So Mr. Lowe has indicated that he's interested in running for reappointment again on the Personnel Commission. This is part two of a three-part process. Uh, we'll bring the final recommendation to you at a later board meeting. Uh, but he, he is in the audience and he has, he does want to run again. So we ask that you approve this intent.
I'll move to approve the intent of reappointment of Personnel Commissioner Lowe.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. I will move us on to item nine F, public hearing for learning continuity and attendance plan, LCP twenty twenty-one. Since I do not see any public comment, I will close the public hearing on learning.
We have a presentation.
Oh, ah, yes.
We have to do a presentation.
Get to do a presentation. Um, so, so thank you for, for giving me a little bit of time to share about the local continuity and attendance plan. It's a confusing acronym, as we all know, because it carries the same initials as the LCAP. Um, so for that reason, you'll hear me refer to the LCP. You'll also hear people refer to it as the Learning Continuity Plan for short. Um, really, the Learning Continuity Plan, the LCP, is designed to outline our response to COVID nineteen, uh, addressing the needs of our students, how we've responded and how we're supporting, supporting students with learning loss. I won't get too much into the details of what we've been doing. Superintendent Amati, uh, did an excellent job of outlining the specific work that's being done, uh, at our school sites on a daily basis. I will be focusing more on the plan itself. Um, but really the plan is meant to capture, uh, the work that's being done on a, on the ground level. A really amazing, uh, effort being put forth by our teachers, administrators, classified staff. Um, the plan was put together, uh, in collaboration between Educational Services, Student Services, the Budget Office, Special Education and Human Resources, of course, with the input of Superintendent Amati. Um, so as with everything that we're doing right now, this has truly been a collaborative effort. Slide, please. Um, so I'll be covering basically four things. One is the structure of the plan. Um, looking at learning loss and what learning loss means within our region and how we're addressing learning loss. And then finally, looking at the next steps in terms of the LCP. Slide, please. So the Learning Continuity Plan is broken into seven sections. Uh, a lot of these sections, uh, you'll, you'll recognize, but they are slightly different. Uh, the general information section differs from that in the LCAP in that rather than an outline of our district, uh, it's looking more generally in terms of how COVID nineteen impacted our district. Uh, stakeholder engagement is very similar and that, that we'll be looking at how stakeholders were involved. Uh, in-person instructional offerings, uh, this is looking at what, if and when we return to uh, in-person instructional offerings, what our plan is and ensuring that we have a plan. Distance learning program, where we are now, is looking at what our distance learning program. Uh, and as I mentioned before, looking at pupil learning loss in section five. Uh, and then, uh, in section six, looking at our additional actions, uh, mental health services, uh, how we're engaging students who are not engaged, school nutrition. Uh, and it is, and as well as in section seven, looking at our increased and improved services. Slide, please. So stakeholder engagement for the LCP is slightly different from what we had in the LCAP. Obviously, we don't have the in-person, uh, meetings that we have, but there are lots of similarities and that we really looked at who are the groups of parents who are already meeting that we can push out to and gather input with. Uh, we also did lots of work, uh, in terms of making sure, uh, that we're involving uh, the groups that need to be involved, including parents, staff, uh, including both collective bargaining groups, uh, as well as this, this meeting right here, which is our public hearing. Uh, we presented to the Parent Advisory Committee, the D-LAC, which is our District English Language Advisory Committee. Um, we also held a few hearing sessions, uh, with parent groups. Um, and our initial data that we, we took in, of course, was the data that we had through our parent and staff survey data that we conducted earlier in the spring. Uh, we gathered more data as well over the summer. Slide, please. So again, this section, the in-person instructional offering section, uh, is part of the, the LCP that's required by the, uh, state. Um, and it's the section where we outline what we're doing. Now, we've already done a few presentations on this, so I won't go into great detail other than to remind you that we are looking at, uh, uh, following those plans that Superintendent Amati outlined earlier in her presentation. Uh, once we get that clearance and follow that process, then we would be, uh, looking at the possibility of moving back into some sort of hybrid model. Um, that would happen after we go through that process in elementary school. That would look like an AMPM model and its secondary and AB schedule. Slide, please. The distance learning program, as you're aware, in our school district, uh, is made up of a main option and an alternative option. Uh, this is, uh, where all students are enrolled currently. Uh, in the main option, students are receiving instruction online. Um, generally speaking, uh, they're using the same curriculum that they would be using for hybrid or in-person instruction. Uh, however, the, uh, instruction is being delivered via some sort of online system, whether that be Google Classroom, Zoom, or, or Google Meet or another, uh, tool. Uh, we also have an alternative option. Uh, this, at the elementary level, looks like CVVPE, which is Castro Valley Virtual, uh, Program for Elementary Schools. Uh, there we are using PathBlazer, which is an edge annuity tool. Um, and it, it's CVVA for secondary schools at both the middle school level uh, and the high school level, where we are using edge annuity as a platform. Slide, please. Slide, please. So in terms of learning loss, uh, we have, we are seeing learning loss trends that are really stark at the national level as well as the state level. So if you look at this chart, what you'll see, if you look at the solid red line that the green arrow is pointing to, that is the typical summer learning loss that we would see in a school year. Uh, so if you see going from, following that red line from September first through to mid-June, typically at mid-June, you would see that red line tilt downward, uh, over the summer, uh, which reflects the lost learning that happens over summer months typically. However, uh, what we've seen, uh, in, in national trends, and, and we don't have data specific to our school district yet, but we are gathering data. Um, what we've seen nationally as well as across California is rather than that downward slope beginning in, uh, mid-June, it began when we closed schools, uh, for COVID nineteen. And so you saw that downward trend where that dotted line indicates school closure. Um, that red arrow points to it. You'll see a significant gap in lost learning uh, for, in that case, and for, for the red lines, those being third grade students. Uh, in some cases, the data indicated that learning loss could have wiped out up to seventy-five percent of the learning uh, that took place during a school year, especially for our most, um, our most vulnerable students, our uh, economically disadvantaged students, English learners, foster youth and the other groups that we know uh, need the most support. We see the same things across grade level. Slide, please. Slide, please. I apologize. Those were very similar slides. They're, the same trends followed for both ELA and for math uh, on a statewide and a national level. And so a lot of the causes that research has shown for learning loss had to do with, uh, the fact that the suddenness of the school closures, uh, the need to go to online learning, uh, without the type of preparation, uh, in any school district. We actually were one of the better prepared school districts. Um, however, um, that still even for us was not enough that we could deliver the type of instruction uh, that we know we're capable of delivering. Um, that meant a lack of engagement, oftentimes, uh, difficulty teaching all of the standards uh, because the tools, the, uh, curriculum, et cetera, were unfamiliar to the people using them as well as to the students, uh, who are attempting to access them. A lot of the traditional assessments couldn't be conducted, including our own internal assessments as well as the state mandated assessments. Uh, families may not have been familiar with the tools that were being used either. And so they weren't able to support their students or necessarily help their students access the technology. Uh, and finally, another troubling trend, uh, that we've learned about from the county uh, is that there was a very significant decrease, uh, in mandated reports of abuse. And this was true within our county and across the state. Uh, now they don't believe that's due to a decrease in abuse. What they believed is that there was potentially, uh, significant ongoing abuse that went unreported and unaddressed. Uh, and so, uh, those families weren't able to be supported. A slide, please. So addressing learning loss, what are we doing to address these challenges? What have we done and what are our plans moving forward? Uh, next slide. This will be a much more general overview than the detailed, uh, uh, account that Superintendent Amati gave us earlier. However, as was indicated earlier, we have conducted lots of teacher training to start off with. So one of those challenges having to do with familiarity of how to instruct online, we can say with confidence, all of our teachers have been given, uh, training in terms of how to conduct online instruction. And, uh, our teachers really did, I, I think, uh, uh, an amazing job of taking this work on in the summer months. Our principals also did a great job of helping to support that work. Uh, and many of them did not take any time off over the summer. Um, many of our teachers spent their summer months as well, planning for the beginning of the school year. Developing systems for monitoring student engagement, uh, not just social, not just academically, but also social emotionally. Um, and so we have data and we're beginning to use that data to develop interventions. Uh, and we're moving very quickly to get those interventions up and running in a way that will address the students with the greatest need as well as, uh, in a manner that addresses the needs themselves that we've identified. Uh, we've conducted parent workshops and are continuing, uh, to work and, and do parent outreach to help parents access. We've conducted parent workshops and are continuing to work and do parent outreach to help parents access the online learning tools and help to support them in supporting their students. As Superintendent Amati stated earlier, it was a really tremendous success to be able to distribute Chromebooks to any student that needs them overwhelmingly. In fact, every student in our district has received a Chromebook. As well as my five for students that are in need of internet access. We've also increased our social emotional supports that we're offering remotely and online and developed new systems for monitoring them, including survey tools and including assessment system that we discussed before. Slide please. So professional development is an ongoing process this year. We know that there's work to do. This is our first year conducting online instruction at the scale that we're looking at. So we began with summer training on modern teacher. We also have given teachers who are teaching at CVVA and CVVPE age annuity training, which is again the online adaptive curriculum that they're using. But we know we're going to have to continue that work to support our teachers so that they can do the best job possible in supporting our students. We're also continuing to do training on a weekly basis around social emotional learning and anti-racist teaching and learning. And that will be an ongoing project throughout the year. And the summer planning and collaboration that took place this year, we're continuing to reap the benefits from that. As teachers developed, many of the playlists that are just starting now were already developed months ago for the summer and are continuing to do that work during the school year as well. Slide please. So in terms of the LCP, we are really focused on supporting the students that have the greatest need. Our low-income families, our McKinney-Vento families, who are primarily our homeless families, English learners, students with disabilities that are differently abled students and their families, as well as student groups that we know have been historically underserved in the school system. Specifically, our African-American and Latino families, making sure that all of our students that need support get the support that they need. So we're using the assessment data, but we're also looking at groups of students that we know historically we want to make sure are receiving the support that they need to be successful. Slide please. And so in terms of additional actions that are going above and beyond the standard supports. We, as you know, conduct social and emotional well-being supports through our social workers and as well as through our wellness center. We're continuing to provide that work, but we're also extending that work through weekly lessons that have been developed by Marion Meadows in conjunction with PBIS. Now that is connected through not only looking at social emotional well-being, but also looking at anti-racist teaching, but also anti-racist learning so that students are aware of how to engage with each other in a way that is positive. People engagement and outreach is a huge component as well. As we learned last spring, we did have lots of difficulty with students who weren't able to access the curriculum, who may not have had a learning environment, who may not have had Wi-Fi access or may not have had space and which was which was conducive to learning. And so we're developing tools to identify those students and then outreach to those students. And finally, what we're starting to launch in the next few weeks is spaces that we can provide where they can have hubs in which they can do their learning as Superintendent Amati indicated earlier. Also increase services for our most for students with the greatest need. Slide please. So the three key pieces in terms of the engagement really come down to having academic interventions and accelerated learning. So the academic interventions, a lot of times we think of those as being ways to intervene for students who are behind, but oftentimes we don't consider the fact that those same students will need to accelerate if they're going to catch up. Typically, acceleration is associated with students who are already ahead. What we're looking at is strategies that can be used to accelerate our students who are not ahead right now and need to catch up. Specifically, we know that there are some students that may not have been significantly behind before this. So how can we look at identifying those students as well? How can we engage parents and make sure that we have the social emotional supports that students need? Slide please. So it was once said, don't tell me what you believe in, show me your budget. I use that phrase quite a lot. And this is the budget, this is where the dollars are being spent that are governed by the LCP. Specifically, three areas, we're looking at support services. We're looking at targeted and specialized services, but if you look within those boxes, you'll see that these are boxes that are not just general expenditures. These are expenditures that are really focused on making sure that our students get the best results, the best support so that they can be successful with online learning and/or when we return to hybrid instruction, making sure they have the support they need. Oh, and finally, of course, materials and supplies related to making sure that they're successful in this context. Slide please. So in terms of process, we've been through the process, as I mentioned before, of gathering input from our stakeholders. We've also obviously received the template that was actually just received less than a month ago. And tonight, we're doing our initial reading on September 3rd. We'll return after posting these slides as well as for information about the LCP on our district website. We'll return on the 23rd and ask for your approval. Assuming that that happens, then we will bring that approved LCP to the county office of education where they will give us further input in terms of any adjustments that they would need. And that is it for the LCP.
I'm gonna go ahead and comment, so don't see any hands. Jason, I really appreciate the work that you're doing to support everyone that needs support. I mean, you say our money's where, you know, we're putting our money where our words are, we're putting our money into action to help those most in need. And you know, your continual efforts to do that, especially during the times that we have now are great. I do want to ask one question. I know that you were talking about specific groups that you're working with. Since the last time we've talked, what additional groups have you you met with? And has there been any new aha information gleaned?
Yes, I mean, well, there's lots of information. One, it's a smaller group. We've gotten our social emotional survey data back since the last time we've met. And it's really been interesting because there's lots of detailed information provided primarily by students. It asks some pointed questions, including, do you need support? Especially if you're looking at secondary students and high school students, a lot of times they're reserved about saying that they need support. So there are two questions, one is, do you need support? They could answer yes, or they could say maybe, but reach out to me anyway. And it's a very small percentage, actually, when we triangulate the data between that question and a couple of other questions that we use to find our students. But it's a key demographic group. And we do see that our economically disadvantaged students are clustered in there. We do see that a lot of times our students who might be McKinney-Vento families. We've also found some families who would not necessarily fit into McKinney-Vento. But we have families that living circumstances might be such that multiple students are in the same room at the same time attempting to access online learning, which is difficult just because of sound. So that the level at which we can identify the specific needs has changed. So now we're at the point that we can identify most of the students that are in need of support and we can identify the types of supports they need. The step that we're at now is launching those first supports that we can and making sure that and then figuring out how we're going to monitor to make sure they're effective.
I mean, you're gonna respond to that and then Joe, I had a question.
I was gonna just add to, Dr. Reiman has done a lot of just outreach. D-LAC is another group that they met with, also with the teachers' union and classified union. So all of those different groups have actually been, you know, there's been quite a bit of an outreach. What Dr. Reiman mentioned about the survey is extremely important. You know, when I look at that data, like he said, it's clear that there is a need and where there is a need. I don't know that other districts have that. I think that survey was actually created by our behavioral health group and student services and our social workers and counselors. It's amazing. It's a really good tool that maybe, you know, other districts can use as well.
Joe?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to thank Jason for the presentation and reminding all of us how hard we're working and the support we give to our students way beyond ABC science lessons and so on. I think it's really critical and I know I've had conversations with other school board members and I am aware that our social emotional health framework is a model for other school districts. No one I've talked to has gotten even close to where we are in accepting the responsibility of the schools in helping students with that. And I think it's really important. But mostly, I'm just really proud that Castro Valley is doing the things that Jason described. And I think that we are doing what we can and looking for more to support students in recognizing that, again, just what happens in the classroom isn't all that a child needs to become well-educated.
Any other comments or questions for Jason? Thank you so much, Jason, for coming and sharing with us. We're looking forward to having you come back next time. Thank you. And now I will close the public hearing. I will move us onto item 9G. A public hearing proposal for school facility fees is authorized by government code section 65995. I will open up the hearing and go over to Susie.
Thank you very much. So there's the presentation and the report included in the packet. So that's for information for the board and the public. As you mentioned, the proposed fees are authorized by the education code section that you noted earlier. Level one fees are capped at the beginning of every even numbered year. And it's by the state allocation board. So that's what we follow, it's 2020. And so they approved the increase back in February. And so school districts like us, the once it's approved, then we go through a process. We work with a third party to take a look at our report. So we they can look at our numbers and also the the community to see if this is something that they would recommend for our district. And so we've done that, we've gone through the process. That's why you have a report that's included in the packet. One thing that I, a couple of things that I do wanna note, the increase for residential construction and reconstruction went up by 29 cents per square foot. So it went from $3.79, $3.79 to $4.08. For the new for new commercial and industrial construction, it increased by five cents. And so it went from 61 cents to 66 cents. And then the mini mini storage per square foot is it's seven cents. These fees that we collect, they can only be used for construction or modernization of our school facilities. And for the 1920 school year, we included in the unaudited actuals that I will be presenting in the next couple of items. We received about $300, $250,000 in developer fees in 1920. And as you know, in December, we are required to submit to the board and for you to approve the uses of, you know, what we've used those funds for. And so we identify those, we have a detailed report for your review in December. And that's done on every single year and sometime in December, and it's also a public hearing.
Let me put the comments. Given that, I will close the public hearing and move us on to item 9H. Adopt resolution 212021, increasing school facilities fees as authorized by government code section 65995.
I'll move to adopt resolution 212021.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Susie. And move us on to item 9I, adopt resolution 222021, approved in the 2019, 2020 appropriations limitation recalculation and the 2021 estimated appropriations limitation calculation. Again, let.
Yes, this is an annual thing that we take to the board. It is part of the unaudited actuals. And so this is the GAN limit. And as you mentioned, this is an estimate that we a calculation that we do for the prior year, which is 1920. And also the estimate for the subsequent year, which is the 2021 school year. And so we've done the calculation and we are within the spending limit. And so you would have seen some, you know, additional explanation if we did not meet the limitation or the limit on appropriation. So in this case, we are meeting the the requirement by taking this to the board for your approval. I'll move to adopt resolution 22-2021.
Second.
It's removed and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We'll move back to Susie for item 9J. Approve the certification of the 2019, 2020 unaudited actuals.
For this one, I am going to present, it's just a few slides, just to show you changes from estimated actuals to unaudited actuals. If you recall, we went through a couple of slides on estimated actuals in June. Back in, that was a couple of months ago. That was part of the proposed or, you know, budget that we presented to you as well. This time is looking at how we ended the year 1920. And that's through June 30th to 2020. So next slide. So this is a recap of our revenue. So our revenue from estimated actuals to unaudited actuals. As you can see, we have some changes there in terms of local control funding formula. A small change there of $67,000. And this is based on final state certified amount. This is based on ADA. And so there was a slight change from for the when we reported our attendance to the state. And so that's a slight change. In terms of federal, you're seeing a change there of over half a million dollars. And that's because we had, when it comes to federal funds for funds that they sent over to us or in terms of cash and that we did not spend, we need to account for, we need to basically reverse the entry. And we, and so we transfer the funds to unearned revenue. And that's the reason why it's 574,000 reduction there. This is really not going to impact us in a way where we can actually put the money back in the current year. So because we did not earn it last year, because we didn't spend it, the state, the federal requires us to reverse the entry so we can then record the revenue in the current year. And so that's gonna be the carryover that we will. record the revenue in the current year. And so that's going to be the carryover that we will be posting as part of the second, as part of the first interim report for 2021. So I just wanted to just share that with you that we're not actually losing the 574,000. It's still our allocation. It's just we get to record it in the new year. Other state revenue, you probably have seen this and recall last year when I presented the un-audited actuals for 1819, I did mention the SB 90, which is the additional costers on behalf payment that the state required us to, to record. And so as you are aware, well aware, the costers on behalf payment is really a paper only transaction. So the state gives us a certain amount for our, for each district. In this case, for our district, it's an increase of 2.4 million dollars. We record it in the revenue. Then we also record it in expenditures. So there's no impact. But in this case, it is showing as an increase in on the other state revenue by 2.4 million dollars because of that transaction or, or, you know, entry. Other local revenue increased by 567,000 as we expected because we still received some local donations, which is we really truly appreciate. Even, you know, with the pandemic, the last quarter of, of 1920, we did get some donations. E-rate subsidy is something that we, we also need to record. And or, you know, we received, it's about, about $200,000 and then interest earnings. We projected that the interest will go down, but because of the cash, available cash that we have at the, with the Alameda County Treasurer's Office, we did get a little, a slight bump in our interest earnings. And so all of those changes make up that 2.3 million dollar difference from estimated to un-audited actuals. And then next slide, we're, now we're, this is looking at expenditures. So how did we end the year 1920 in terms of our expenditures, salaries and benefits? You're seeing an increase there. And that's because of what I mentioned earlier in the previous slide with the costers on behalf payment. And so we recorded the revenue and this is where we recorded the expense under the salaries and benefits. Books and supplies, you're seeing a negative 1.6 million dollars there. That's because we did not spend what I mentioned earlier about the Title I, the federal funds that we received that we didn't spend. I do want to highlight this because, because of the pandemic, the federal government allowed school districts to go over the 15% threshold for carryover. So on a given year, the federal limits the carryover to 15% this time because of the pandemic, knowing that there's some, you know, there are going to be some expenditure, planned expenditures that are not going, that did not happen. There was, we, the federal government recognized that. And so they are allowed, they've allowed school districts to go over the 15%. So you're seeing a slight increase here in terms of carryover for, and federal programs. Services and other, and other expenditures, those are unspent local donations and supplemental funds as well as other programs that we have. And under the capital outlay, a month ago, you did see a presentation from, from our Director of Maintenance and Operations and Transportation Department, Mr. Krebs. And so there were a lot of, he, his department have done a lot of work in the summer. And so that work actually is coming out of routine restricted and deferred maintenance projects. And so for the expenditures in 20, in 1920, it's work that happened through June 30th. And so anything beyond that, we get to account or we, we don't get to pay for it or, or it's, it's in the current year expenditures, I should say. So we record it in the current year expenditures compared to, instead of 1920. And that's why you're seeing a, an increase or a reduction there in, in, in capital outlay by 2.5 million dollars. And then in the other outgo, it's a small change there due to indirect cost adjustment to restricted programs. And then at the bottom there, I do want to just highlight that there's a pie that just shows the percentage in terms of expenditures. So salaries and benefits, we are at 82%, we were at 82% in 1920 of total expenditures. And if you look at books of supplies, make up about 5%. Services and other 11%. Services and other, you're seeing a 12 million dollars there. And most of that, services and other, we pay for, for, for the public, just in case they're wondering what, what are we paying? You know, that's costing us 12 million dollars. And so we, this is property insurance liability, property and liability insurance. We also, this is where we pay our, our utilities. So our PG&E bills, waste management and, and those type of things, as well as transportation for our special ed. So this is where that services and other is coming from. And then next slide. So after looking at the revenue and expenditures, now we get to see the components of ending of 1920 ending fund balance. We have the two, you know, funds there, which is, we have a separate one for unrestricted. And then we have ones for restricted. So where we ended the year in unrestricted, close to $9 million there for restricted is 5.5 million dollars. And then we have the set asides, which is the revolving cash and the prepaid expenses as well as for funds that we did not spend as of June 30th, including supplemental funds. We do need to set aside because those are generated by unduplicated students. And we want to make sure that we are giving it back to the supplement to, and services to use for that purpose. For we, you know, the presentation that you've seen, then the, that Mr., that Dr. Ryman presented where he identified a lot of the things that we're doing for our students. And so this part of the 4.3 million dollars, in addition to that, we have the supplemental funds. And that's why, and this is where it's going to go. We have a $965,000 that will go towards those, those programs. We have textbooks that we, we have some carryover. I do want to highlight this because there's a million dollars here. And a part of the reduction for 2021, you're not going to see a million dollars in set aside for textbooks in the unrestricted program. That's because the, part of the reduction for 2021, we said that we will take $800,000 to help with the 3.7, 3.7 million dollars that we identified for 2021 to help our fund balance in our multi-year, in our multi-year projection. So this is just showing you 1920, but it will look different when we present to you the first interim report, which is going to be a lot less than the million dollars. And then moving down all the way to the reserve for economic uncertainties. So 1920, we ended up with 6.6 million dollars. And that is about 5.98% of reserve. So we're required, the district, our size, we're required to set aside 3%. In this case, we do have 5.98% as of 1920. And then next slide. So the last, last time I reported the 45 day revise, we went, went through a, you know, pretty long conversation about cash flow, just because for 2021, we do, we are concerned about the cash deferrals that the state is imposing for 2021. We do know for 1920, the state deferred the June, our June apportionment. So this is just looking at 1920, just to give you a recap of what, every single month in terms of cash in our general fund. So in July 1, we, our cash balance was 19.3 million dollars. And as you can see, it just, depending on the money that we receive, actual cash that we, that's in our bank, it changes every single month, but it, we were in a very good position. We were not at all concerned about, you know, not meeting our payroll because we had enough cash. So if you look at June, all the way at the bottom, June 30th, and I have a note there, we, how we ended our, the year with 8.8, close to 8.8 million dollar cash. And that's after the state deferred our 7.8 million dollars in, in terms of, you know, the deferral, that the first deferral, I should say, that they, they put on us in order to avoid a, a, a cut to school district, reductions to school district. They did it in another way, which is they held our cash. And so that, this is the first one that you're seeing is June 30th. So if we, if the state did not defer that June apportionment of 7.8 million, we would have ended with 16.6 million dollars, which is still kind of close to how we ended last year, July 1, with 19 million dollars. But unfortunately, with the deferral, we were down to 8.8 million dollars. I do want to mention that because of these, these deferrals, the deferrals for 2021, starting in February, our February, March, April, May, June, the state will defer our apportionment. So we've been hearing and we've, I mentioned to you about, you know, the things that we can do to, 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 to help with our cash flow is to first look at our, look at other funds. If we have any cash available that we can, we borrow from ourselves. So basically we look at other funds that we can borrow and we have some available funds and other funds. And there's actually a slide that I would go through, the available funds that we have. And the next thing is, you know, if we can check with the county, the county treasurer's office, if they have enough money to, to, for us to borrow from them. And then the third is after we exhausted all of the, you know, the first and second, if we, we still need cash, then we go out for a TRAN. TRAN is the Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note. I do want to mention that the California School Finance Authority, or CSFA, announced a creation of a new statewide pooled TRAN to finance, you know, the, this is a financing program to support school districts like us. The, they came up where the lower upfront fees increased competition to lower interest costs. And then this is obviously for us, it is better than us going out on our own and trying to do, to, to, you know, work with, with the bank on our own. So a lot of districts that I've talked to, including surrounding districts, are going to apply for this. They're going through the process. There are a couple of applications. The first application was due a week ago, if, for districts who may need cash as early as November. And then the, the next application process is due in a couple of weeks for districts who may need cash sometime in February, when the deferral starts, you know, kicking in. So at this point, we're not, we don't need cash in November of this year. We have enough to cover our expenses. In February, we, at this point, we're not looking to borrow anything for February. We are looking to borrow for funds to cover our expenses. It would be sometime in May, but we are refining our, we keep looking at our, our cash flow just to make sure that we, we do have enough to cover everything that we need to, to cover, including looking at the other funds. And then my final slide, as I mentioned, is the, we have other funds. So here are the ending fund balances for each, each fund. We have the Adult Education Fund. We have the Cafeteria Special Reserve. The three that I want to just, you know, highlight for you are the, the first one is Fund 35, the county school facilities. We do have a 7.2 million dollars there. That's, that's the first, that's the first one that we can take a look at if we needed cash. So we would need to, so that means we will be, we are allowed to borrow from Fund 35 as well as Fund 40, which is Special Reserve Fund for capital outlays, outlay projects. So that's about a million dollars. And then the last one there is Fund 67 Self-Insurance Fund, 1.2 million dollars there. So, so I wanted to just share that with you because I know that cash flow is at the forefront of every single district because, just because of the issue or, you know, the, the, the problem it's going to create once you start running out of cash to pay for your, for your expenses. And so we are looking at our cash flow on a regular basis and always, and updating our projections just to make sure we're very close to, to, and know when we really truly need to start borrowing from other funds or when we need to go out for a TRAN. And then with that, I think, so actually I take that back. I do have a one last slide, which is just the next step. The, 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 the last time you're going to see the 1920, which is what we in the audit, in the form of an audit report. Right. I have a January 2021 here, and that's because every year we do take it to the board. We have the auditor present the audit report to you in January. Because of the pandemic, they are actually, we don't know when, if, if they're going to be ready by January 2021. The, the state allowed for the auditors to extend basically the deadline. So the deadline is supposed to be December 15th, the audit report must be submitted to the state. But now it's looking like March 15th of 2021. And so we may not have the audit report to you by January. But as soon as we know, we will let you know, you know, with the, around the, the timing of all that. They have, they've been here. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to, if they've, you've had conversations with, with our auditors. But they've been here, but because they're very limited in terms of what they can do, they, they're having to do it multiple times. And so that is, that's the reason why the state allowed them to basically extend the deadline. Give them additional three months to go through, to work through everything that they need to, to, to do in terms of reviewing financials for each district. And then with that, I, if you have any questions about.
Since we know we're going to have a cash flow issue next year, have we started doing anything in terms of like changed? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, the way you did it, I thought maybe you couldn't hear me. I thought I had unmuted myself. Have we done anything like changing our payment terms or anything? I don't know what we're doing now, like, but moving them out. And if we're paying net 30, making it net 45 or net 60, something like that to try and help even out the.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. That's a really good question. I know that for, especially for our invoices that are, you know, in this case, give an example, property insurance liability, we do pay close to about $700,000. And so we've been working with, you know, vendors, including our insurance company to see what we can do about delaying that payment, just know, just because they know that the, the struggle of every single district in terms of, you know, cash flow. So yes, that's a very good question. So yes, that's a very good question. I, a director of business services is, is really working with our accounts payable to, to look at the terms, instead of paying it immediately. If we have 30, if it's net 30, net 45, or net 60, we do take advantage of those. Yes.
Gary?
You know, thanks for your report, Suzy. It's always interesting to hear where we are. But, you know, and your answer to Monica, I think is part of the, what I was going to ask about. But, you know, there are a lot of moving parts in this deferrals business. And those deferrals are going to take a massive cut out of our budget in the spring. And we're not going to get that money back for a few months. And then as we heard Abe talk last week, the dreaded term rollover may enter into the equation. I was hoping that at some point here, we might have a budget workshop that would sort of put all of this together. I mean, we've been sort of touching on it piecemeal in several meetings, but I don't, I certainly don't have a good understanding of where we're going with this. And I'm, you know, even some of the easy answers, like the state's going to put a fund together. You know, what if everybody dips into that fund? I mean, we heard last week that's a possibility. And would we even qualify with, you know, Abe was saying we might have to go out on the, on the regular market and go to Wells Fargo or somebody like that to ask for money. This is, there are a lot of parts to this. So I, you know, I would like to just see if we could at some point have some more organized presentation on where we are and what it might do to us and what the solutions might be. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that, that we need to just focus it on what you're talking about. Like, what do deferrals mean? Just like Suzie has been, Ms. Chan has been doing, just focus on that. What does it mean? When did it happen before? And when we say we're going to apply for the TRANs with the state, what could it look like? What does the interest rate might look like? When Abe was talking about the, that as a concern, at that point, he didn't know that they had already given us the two dates that Ms. Chan just mentioned for everybody to apply. It's not like they're going to run out. But I think all of those things, it's just really not something that we do all the time. So that would be a, just maybe a presentation for like an hour or two, or an hour, just, but it would be virtual. So we would just have, what does, what does it mean to have a TRAN? How does that work? I think just people just knowing that every month, we're supposed to get money from the state. And this is how much we get. And this is how much we pay out. So we'll work on, on that and schedule a maybe a workshop.
We also include our strategies in that as well, because you know, we're going to lose 70% of our money gone for four straight months. I mean, that's some, this is the, the next big thing that we have to deal with.
Yeah. Yeah, we could, we could put a whole bunch of that information together.
Monica and Joe?
If we could get a cash flow statement, I mean, not details, but just a big picture of terms of how much money we're getting in every month. And I know it's going to be general because it fluctuates. And how much is going out, just to kind of go along with that topic of deferrals so that we could have a sense of what are we actually spending, taking in and spending every month? And how is the, that, I think that would help enlighten us a little bit more too, as to how the deferrals are going to actually impact us.
Yeah, so in terms of the cash flow, that's always been part of the interim reports and budget reports that we take to, to the board for approval. Except, you know, obviously this time, it, we're in a different world, right? So we have all these deferrals. In the past, we, that, it's not, it's, it's part of the packet, but we don't really, you know, go through it. But this time definitely, you know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing process for us. More, the more, it's, it's, it's more important now than, than ever to, to really put that in front of you, just so you're aware of what we've been bringing in and what's, you know, what we're spend, what we're bringing in in terms of revenue and what we're spending. So, so you can see the month to month and the projection also for the, for the next 18 months. In this case, we, in, in the past, we were only required to have a cash flow for 12 months, you know, for, for the fiscal year, July, July 1 through June 30th. This time, it's really a two-year cash flow, because those deferrals from, that Mr. Howard mentioned, you know, from September through June, we actually won't get them until the next fiscal year. And that's why there's a really a need for us to do a two-year projection. And that's what you will definitely see on every reporting period. And including the, when, when we present to you the, you know, more detailed TRAN and, and, and what, what it's for and when we need it and, and all those things.
Yeah, so, so basically, we've had those reports. We just haven't, most people don't pay attention to them because it hasn't been important. Because it just, we knew we had it. But now, to your point, I think that would be a really good part of that presentation.
Joe?
Well, thank you, Suzy, for this report. You know, the unaudited actuels are always a really big deal for us as a board, because we want to prove to our community that we're being prudent and good financial managers. And one of the questions that were asked all the time is what about the money that falls to the bottom line? So this report is giving us the detail on that money. And so the community knows that we're aware of when it happens and why and what accounts it's happening in. And I think that's really important. I do think the discussion about deferrals is important because again, our community needs to hear from us that this is what's happening in schools. It's similar to the situation where parents come to us and say, this school district next door gets X thousands of dollars more per student than you do. And we always have to have the right information to answer that, you know, our unduplicated account is, and we don't get that money, and so on and so forth. So that's really important. And tonight, you expanded the normal report to include these, the deferrals and the rollovers. This isn't the first time it's happened. When Schwarzenegger was governor and he was blowing up the credit card, he deferred. And then at one point, they just stopped paying. They just said to the school district, guess what? You're not getting your June check, period. So it's always good. This is one of the reasons that, again, as prudent financial managers, we need to look at that reserve all the time and know that we have some money to cover things like this. So it's a really good idea to have a discussion to look at next year and how we're going to handle it. But I really appreciate the report you gave tonight.
So we'll set up, we'll send out some dates to find the best, you know, workshop time for everybody. But that's, that would be great.
Great. And this is an action item?
We'll move approval of the unaudited.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Suzy. There, we will not have public comment, no raised hands, and we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, I did my update, so perhaps next time we can just take that off and leave it on.
Great. Board member comments and reports. Stop.
I don't have anything to report since our last meeting. No official board business.
Joe?
We had an ROP meeting where we also approved our unaudited actuels. And we heard from the superintendent that they have less than a month, but they are applying for the Strong Workforce Grant and the Workability Grants, which brings millions of dollars into Castor Valley Unified. So we, we're supportive of that. I'm going to bring to Lavender and Parveen a resolution recognizing the Eden Area ROP, because this is the 50th year that ROPs have been in California. And the Eden Area ROP is celebrating their 50th anniversary. So they were one of the first ROPs in the state. So I will bring you a resolution for consideration. All of the board members are taking it to their boards. I participated in a call with CSBA board members on the challenges of opening school. I was, I felt really terrific when I finished in that. I think that Castor Valley is very well positioned compared to a lot of other school districts. Of note was Dublin Unified's highly touted choice program for in-person or distance learning, never got off the ground. And they are still confused about exactly what they're going to do to educate their students. So I thought that was interesting. I want to remind people that if you're interested in the Community Alliance Book Group, on Monday, they'll be meeting and doing the last nine chapters of How to Be an Anti-Racist. One of our retired teachers from the high school, Teresa Branoff, is going to moderate it. I think it will be a great evening. And then I just want to note that it's September 9th. That makes it two months from our July 9th meeting, where we looked at the first idea of how we were going to have school this year. And I just wanted to say that I'm really confident and exciting, excited that we have stayed focused on our three issues. What's best for children to educate them using science and using data to perform that education? Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Gary?
Just two things. First, I visited CVE today and I saw the principal and an interesting number of staff there. There are quite a number of them there, all in their rooms and all working very hard. The morale was really excellent. And, you know, they are working through all the challenges. But it was, it was really a very fun visit. I was glad to see everybody. They were feeding students at noon, or about 11:30 or so, with the free meals that was mentioned earlier by Suzy. So it looks really like things are going very well. I was really pleased with what I saw down there. So I only have one other item, and that is, you know, if you looked outside today, it looked like Armageddon or something, the orange sky and darkness at noon. That reminds us, this is fire season. And tomorrow evening, Rotary, the Castor Valley Rotary Club, along with the Alameda County Fire Department and the East Bay Regional Parks Fire Department, are sponsoring a fire information Zoom call. If you are interested, let me know. And you can get in on that. We're happy that we had Eric Swalwell's help on advertising this event. So we're hoping there'll be a lot of people there to benefit from that. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Monica?
I went to a Canyon's PTA meeting last night, which was very nice. They had very good turnout. I mean, I'm guessing part of it's so much easier when you can do it via Zoom as opposed to having to actually physically go there. Tomorrow, the Alameda County School Board meeting. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Monica. For myself, I was lucky enough, speaking of Castor Valley Elementary, I was able to go to their PTA meeting last week. And I also did notice there was a lot of engagement online, which I am happy to see and was happy to see their smiling faces. People seem to be in good spirits. But that's it for me. We do have to convene back to closed session. We didn't finish up from what we started. So what we will do is we will go back to closed session and then we'll come out to report. So for those of you who would like to stay on the line and wait for us, we'll be back in a minute, or a few minutes, or as when we come back. All right, so we will go back to closed session and then come back out for our report. Thank you.